And now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. If you would like to speak during the visitor portion of the agenda or provide testimony on the agenda items, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. For the record, I will do roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Akal, Commissioner Ellis, and Commissioner Winter. Let the record show that Vice Chair McCann has a potential conflict of interest and has recused herself from the meeting. Commissioner Glenn Winkle and Lawler are excused and absent from the meeting tonight. The visitor section of the agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issue or item. Anyone wishing to speak should indicate this to staff and wait for your name to be called. Does anyone wish to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issue? Okay, let the record show, no response. Um. So I can move on to, uh, commission communication. Is there any communication from commissioners? Okay. Staff communication? Anything? Oh, Jan, are you muted?
Sorry. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Gianna Fox, current planning manager. I have no staff communications for you this evening.
Okay, great. Uh, so we can move right on to the first item on the agenda, which is the application for the Raleigh Hills Elementary School, continued from June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Case number is ADJ two thousand and twenty-two dash zero 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 five. CU two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero one two. CU two thousand and twenty-three dash zero 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 five. DR two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one five five. LD two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero two zero. LD two thousand and twenty-two dash zero 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 eight. Sorry, LLD, twenty-two-two dash zero 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 eight. SDM two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero one. And TP two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero one six. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan, and any applicable Beaverton code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are, uh, development code sections forty point oh three point one, facilities review committee, forty point ten point fifteen point two point C, major adjustment, forty point fifteen point fifteen point five point C, new conditional use, forty point twenty point fifteen point three point C, design review three, forty point forty-five point fifteen point two point C, replat one, forty point forty-seven point fifteen point one point C, legal lot determination, forty point fifty-eight point fifteen point C, sidewalk design modification, forty point ninety point fifteen point two point C, tree plan two, and fifty point nine five point seven modification of a decision. Testimonies, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission or other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in certain court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, expertise contact, or site visit to declare? Commissioner Akal. Oh, we can't hear you, Commissioner Akal.
Oh, um.
Yeah.
No, I do not. On all three.
Thanks. Commissioner Ellis.
Um, a drive-by visit, uh, was conducted over the weekend, um, just to get eyes on the property. I did not have contact any with anyone or interact with anybody or anything, and it was a, it was a short visit. Other than that, no conflicts.
Okay, Commissioner Winter.
I am very familiar with this site, having lived. I think this is a grade school my neighborhood attends. I'm not a child parent, so I don't know exactly, but, um, I haven't had no contact and, uh, whatever the other question.
Site visit?
Yeah, well, the site visit is I drive by this place about once a day, so, last thirty years, so, I think I know the site.
Okay, great. And I have no conflict of interest contacts or site visits to declare. Does any member of the audience wish to question the commissioner about expertise contacts or site visits or challenge a right of commission to participate in this hearing?
Chair, may I interject just momentarily? I just want to make it clear for the record that, uh, Commissioner McCann, uh, feels that she has a potential conflict of interest because she's been hired by the applicant to do some design work, and so she has recused herself. Just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Right, thank you. Um, the order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. The city staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will then be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each, followed by members of the public opposed to the application can speak to five minutes each. And finally, members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will have up to five minutes each to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The planning commission will then hear final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Lena Smith. I'm an associate planner. Before I get started, I just want to confirm you received a supplemental memo earlier tonight regarding trees between the school and the neighbor's property. Great, perfect. I'll go ahead and share my screen. So tonight I'll be presenting on the Raleigh Hills Elementary School project. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing Raleigh Hills Elementary School building and replace it with the new ninety-seven thousand square foot building with associated site improvements. The subject site is located near the intersection of Shoals Ferry Road and Laurel Wood Avenue. The site is nine point six five acres in size, and as in the Denny Whitford Raleigh West neighborhood. The site is zoned residential mixed C, and educational institutions are a conditional use in the zone. The applicant's proposal requires eight land use applications, which are listed here, and I will go through them one by one. The first application is for a new conditional use because the use is conditionally permitted in this zone, and there's no existing conditional use permit on file. The main approval criterion for a new conditional use is that it's compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood. The applicant states the school has existed on this site since at least nineteen twenty-seven with minimal impacts on the neighborhood. The applicant also proposes new design features that will further help minimize impacts to the neighborhood. This includes, um, a building that will be more centralized on campus, so it'll be located farther away from abutting properties, adequate landscape buffering and screening, two parking lots with more efficient vehicle circulation to reduce traffic and congestion during busy student drop-off pickup times, and a new four-way signalized intersection that will also improve traffic safety. A design review three is also required due to the size of the proposal. Some key features of the applicant's design include two parking lots that are large enough to provide safe and efficient vehicle circulation for school buses and parent vehicles during those busy drop-off and pickup times, a new four-way signalized intersection that's aligned with Montclair Drive to the south, which will help improve traffic safety, adequate landscaping and play areas, as well as two pedestrian-oriented courtyards. And as you can see on this site plan, due to the need for these two parking lots that have to be large enough to accommodate that safe circulation, the building footprint, uh, buildable area is constrained to the central part of the campus. This ties into the applicant's request for a major adjustment. The applicant requests to exceed the maximum building height by thirteen point two five feet. As shown on this previous slide, the building is constrained to the central part of campus, and on top of that, the new school will need to provide capacity for two hundred and thirty-one additional students and ten additional staff members. So in order to provide adequate space that meets the school's new programming needs, the applicant proposes to build a taller building. There are also topographic challenges to the site that further limit where the building can be located. Part of the building's height also comes from these gabled roofs, which serve a functional purpose. They support state-required solar equipment and screen mechanical units that had to be located on the roof due to the constrained building footprint. The applicant's next application is also for a new conditional use, but this is specifically for a modification of a decision. In nineteen eighty-nine, before the site was annexed into the city, the Washington County Hearings Officer issued a special use approval for the site with a condition for the school's accesses to be consolidated with adjacent properties accesses when the school redevelops. The applicant requests to remove that condition, and this request is subject to Chapter fifty ninety-five modification of the decision. That chapter specifies the modification must be processed through the original application type and go back to the original decision-making authority. Since the city of Beaverton doesn't have a special use application or hearings officer, this request is being processed as a new conditional use with planning commission as the decision-making authority. The condition of approval is referring to this existing condition on the site. There are two residential homes located directly northeast of the school, and their only access to Shoals Ferry Road is by driving through the school's parking lot and continuing north up the gravel road that is located on the school's property. This picture here, uh, shows a view from the parking lot where you can see that gravel road continuing north to the homes. The condition of approval would require the school to provide a consolidated access that would serve both the school and these residential homes upon redevelopment. The applicant requests to remove that condition of approval and instead proposes an alternative design where the residential homes would have their own separate accessway. Both city and county staff agree with the applicant that this is a safer and more efficient alternative as it will eliminate conflicts between school traffic and, and the residents of these homes traveling to and from their properties. Staff notes the applicant will still be consolidating access for the actual school campus, going down from three accesses to two accesses. The applicant has also applied for a legal lot determination and replat one. As detailed in the staff report, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the approval criteria to deem the lot as a legal lot, and the replat one application is to create a new plat for the site, since it's not part of a previously recorded plat. The applicant requests a sidewalk design modification to reduce the planter strip width along Shoals Ferry Road. The Beaverton Engineering Design Manual requires a seven and a half foot wide planter strip, but due to topographic challenges at the site, this would result in a sidewalk that is located below the top surface of the finished curb, which is a key sidewalk design modification approval criterion. As an alternative, the applicant proposes a four-foot wide planter strip, and this helps the sidewalk be more even with the finished curb, as shown in these two diagrams. The applicant's last application is for a tree plan two because they will be removing multiple community trees from the site in order to accommodate the new development. The new design will provide ample landscaping and tree canopy that meets our design guidelines. And as you can see, the applicant also proposes to preserve multiple mature trees along the property lines. So staff has included a recommended condition for the applicant to install tree protection fencing prior to construction. The supplemental memo that was sent earlier today was a request from the neighbors of this property regarding, um, deciduous trees on these, along these property lines shown on this landscaping plan. Their request was that the four deciduous trees would be replaced with four evergreen trees. Staff finds this request will continue to comply with applicable landscaping, buffering, and screening requirements and recommends the planning commission include an additional condition of approval for the applicant to submit a revised site plan reflecting this change. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the Raleigh Hills Elementary School project, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report and the supplemental memo. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, the, the side road for access to the residences in the back is the assumption that after, after they complete that, that proposed new standalone access, would they still own main and maintain and otherwise control that access road, or would that be potentially handed off to the city or the county?
Um, the access road would still remain on the school's property. Um, I could also have the applicant provide more information during their presentation about how that's going to be maintained when it's their turn. Thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions of the, of the staff? No? Okay. Wow, getting off easy tonight. We can, uh, move on to the applicant presentation. The applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourself and stating your name and address for the record.
Uh, hello, thank you, uh, Commissioners and Chair and I, uh, for the record, my name is Eric Balkan, and I will put my address in the, uh, chat. Um, Frank, if you can go ahead and pull up the, uh, share your screen and pull up the presentation. Um, I'm happy to present to you the proposal for the Raleigh Hills Elementary School rebuild. Uh, this project is the second largest financial commitment for Beaverton School District in the current capital bond program approved by voters in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, over this site's, uh, ninety-six years, uh, it has been the subject of a number of additions and improvements, uh, throughout the years, um, resulting in in a bit of a hodgepodge of, uh, of a structure. Um, the building currently has a backlog of greater than twelve million dollars in deferred maintenance needs, um, and has outlived its useful lifespan. Uh, we have our entire, uh, project team here to help present this proposal. Uh, so with that, I am going to turn the floor over to our architectural team and Tim Ganey with the DLR Group.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'll just drop in the chat. Uh, my name is Tim Ganey. I'm the principal in charge for this project with DLR Group. It's real privilege to share this project with you all tonight. Um, and I'll just start off by just, uh, uh, diving into really how we began this project way back when, uh, pre-COVID, when we were thinking about the bond and getting the bond passed. Uh, we really dove into connecting with the community. Uh, we held a series of community engagement, uh, meetings. Uh, it was a layered community engagement. This slide here is showing all the different groups that we connected with over the last, oh, three and a half, four years, uh, including students, staff, parents. We connected with the neighborhood. Uh, there was a design advisory committee formed, uh, known as a DAC, uh, which had, uh, local community and, uh, members on it, obviously BSD facilities. Um, the teaching and learning was represented, uh, cultural organizations, et cetera, and then the leadership group. Uh, and the arrows are sort of showing the back and forth and the recommendations and really finding and growing and learning about the community over the course of three years to really come together and form, uh, on the next page, uh, really what we called, um, these guiding principles. And so the purpose of all those meetings is really to, to determine what is the rubric for, rubric for success? What are the guidelines or the criteria that the design needs to meet? And so after all those meetings and connecting with the community, uh, ultimately, it was refined down to these four guiding principles of community-centered wellness, every student being successful and, and relationships at the core. And so really, that's the rubric. That's the criteria that we as a design team were really given by the community, by the district, um, in terms of developing the design. The community-centered piece is, was all about, um, respecting the past, the past, but embracing the future, understanding that there was an older building, an older school on the site that was, uh, very, had long passed, had long over, long-lived, uh, had long, uh, uh, outlived its, its use. And so, uh, we, we wanted to respect that past, uh, both the brick and sort of the gables, but embrace the future, understanding that there would be a much larger school going on the site. We also understood there was a lot of challenges with site access and congestion. But ultimately, uh, when we got down to thinking about the relationships at the core, we really wanted this project to feel small. And so what you'll hopefully see tonight is that we're creating this really small school feel with a series of these little houses where students can feel connected, both to their community as well to the teach, as well as to each other, to their peers, to the teachers, and ultimately, uh, provide a place for personalized learning and differentiated learning. And so with that, uh, we can move on to the, the next one. So those design drivers, those guiding principles, uh, here is a, uh, photo of the current school, which I think one of the commissioners would know quite well, uh, right along Shoals Ferry. So kind of remember, we're just placing this here because it's, it's sort of a small school feel. It's comfortable. It has a pitched roof. There's some brick. There's quite a few, uh, sort of punched openings. And so we wanted to really respect the, the past, but also embrace the future with the new school. Yeah, so that was a design driver. And this, this diagram here is just hopefully to kind of share with you, uh, what would one big building look like? Well, that's something we did not want to do. Uh, we really wanted to break the building up into these sort of smaller houses in order to create that small school feel, to make it more comfortable and really to, to, to really fit in with the neighborhood, quite, quite honestly, that it's really informed by that neighborhood scale to really bring the building down in terms of size. And so we've, we've broken the building up or the school up into these houses that you'll see in the coming pages, these little houses, these little brick houses that sort of march down, down the, the site. Because there is a lot of topography that we had to deal with, um, and you'll see that on the next slide here. So these diagrams are showing some of the site constraints, uh, if you've been out to the site. There's significant topography as you drive along Shoals Ferry with an eighteen-foot drop, and that's really just heading, you know, east to west. Um, but as you move north to south, as you move into the site, there's another sixteen-foot drop. So it's almost like this thing sort of tilted on its side, and, uh, it's, it was quite challenging in terms of fitting, uh, a school of this size on the site and making it safe and secure for students in terms of access, et cetera. But we saw this as, as a challenge, but also a great opportunity. You know, I mentioned the idea of these, these little houses marching down the hill, and that's exactly what we did. We kind of, we used the existing topography to step the houses down the hill or the school down the hill in order to create that really small school feel. And we really used the slope to allow for that, to, to, to drive, uh, natural daylight into the school. And those diagrams on the bottom of the screen there are showing, uh, instead of placing a huge mass along Shoals Ferry, what if we actually use the topography to step the school down? Almost think of it as like a, a daylit basement. It's not a basement, but think about your house, maybe how it might be two stories on one side and three on the other. That's what we've really done is we really stepped this building down so that along Shoals, it feels quite small. Uh, but then on the back, it, we use the site to kind of step it down. And so maybe the next slide, Frank, thank you. Um, these diagrams, again, uh, using those site constraints as it's not just a challenge, but let's make it an opportunity. Uh, we knew from the very beginning, we heard from the community and from everyone that those ball fields are, are very, very special, and it's a great community resource. It's a resource for recreation. Uh, it also, uh, acts as a community, as a key buffer between the abutting, uh, residential units to the north. And so that was something we knew, uh, we understood very early on that we need to save, and we need to honor that. Uh, it's a great resource. So that's what you see in that top, uh, diagram on the upper right. Um, and we also understood that congestion along Shoals Ferry currently is quite a challenge. Um, there's really one way onto the site. Um, it's extremely congested. If you go there at three o'clock, uh, good luck. It's just not a very safe place for students to be getting in and out of cars or cars getting on and off of Shoals Ferry. And so what we always try to do when we design these schools is to separate the bus drop-off from the parent drop-off. And so that diagram on the bottom of there is showing exactly what we, we've, we've done is we've separated the parent drop-off really to the east, and then the bus drop-off to the west, and then the school falls in between. And what this really does is allow for a huge amount of queuing, um, and congestion to be pulled off of Shoals Ferry. We want to make it as safe and secure for students as soon as possible, and that, that starts with, you know, dropping your kid off as you, as you pull into the parent drop-off. And then with the bus drop-off, we've actually provided a place for buses to have their own way in and out and located the staff parking there. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, we are proposing to have a, um, a signaled intersection along Montclair, and we've aligned the parent drop-off with that, that Montclair Street in order to provide safety and, uh, prove site safety and as well as access. So those are those three diagrams. And on the next page, you'll see how the actual site plan is developed to support those diagrams that you saw on the previous slide. Now you can start to see the, how the building, the houses, the small little, small school field, these little houses have filled in. That's the, the bluish-purple uh, E shape that you see there. And then, um, to the right, you'll see the parent drop-off, and to the left or the bottom of the screen, you'll see the bus drop-off. Uh, the parent drop-off is providing fifty-nine, uh, parking spaces. It's over-tripling the, uh, drop-off that's available right now. And then for the bus drop-off, you'll, there's forty-one staff parking spaces there as well as, uh, queuing for eight full-size buses, uh, which could get obviously larger if you use smaller, uh, sized buses. Right now, there is no bus queuing spaces. They, they pull through the parking lot right up front there. And so this is inherently more, more, um, efficient and safer for student and delivery students. Um, I didn't mention, but we always like to locate staff parking with the bus parking because those are, are sort of that, th- there's never a conflict when s- staff is coming out and buses need to leave, uh, whereas we, we really try not to mix buses with parents because you can imagine the amount of congestion that would happen there in the unsafe, uh, situation that would create for students getting to the, to the front door. Uh, regarding the front door, we've really created this covered main entrance that is adjacent and prominent and seen, uh, from Shoals Ferry. And, uh, that way we can really make it an identifiable place as you pull in from the parent drop-off. Uh, we also always try to locate the administration, which is really, has to be with the front door. Those, those have to have eyes on, on who's coming and going in terms of providing best practices in terms of safety and security for students so that the front office staff can see who's pulling into the parent drop-off lot, as well as who's getting dropped off and walking up to the front door will ultimately be, be let in. So locating that admin right there at the front, uh, viewing who's coming and going off of Shoals Ferry was key to the, the safety of this school. Um, and with that, I can hand it over to, uh, Justin, who's going to help explain some of the covered play, the soft, uh, features, the hard and soft play, uh, as well as some other, uh, features of the landscape.
If justice.
All right.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Justin Lanfear. I'm with Cameron McCarthy. Uh, we're the landscape architects, uh, with the DLR team. And really, one of the main jobs that, uh, we had was basically organizing the site elements in a way that, uh, focuses on the safety, uh, incorporates the community engagement process, um, addresses the site constraints with the grades and the ball field, trying to retain that, as well as trying to, uh, add this lens of, uh, enhancing, utilizing the existing connections with the outdoors, but also enhancing that. And so how we did that, we'll give a few site highlights here. We've, we've got the play areas, uh, soft surface, hard surface play areas, a covered hard surface play area pushed towards the back in a secured, uh, area. There's a fence that kind of, uh, to the north of the, the bus drop-off and to the, uh, east, or sorry, west and north of the parent drop-off kind of creates a secure area for kids. creates a secure area for kids to go out and play, both on the different surfaces as well as within the outdoors. We, the community really spoke loudly about the, the love for the garden area. We've incorporated that garden area into the secured area. It's located over on the west side nestled in between some of the hardscape play areas as well as the existing mature tree west edge that's there. We will also try to incorporate the, the outdoors with the increase of the amount of trees throughout the areas, bringing in the outdoors into learning opportunities. We have a learning courtyard, sort of in the, the north half of the building there, a community courtyard, as well as just the small pockets of outdoor learning all throughout this, the secured area. And with that, that's kind of the highlights. I'll turn it back over to.
Franca is going to take us through some massing studies here and some imagery.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. So before we jump into the renderings, I wanted to do a very quick overview of the three levels of this school. So as we, as you saw in some of the, the previous slides, there are three levels here. The middle level is actually where you enter as, as the public. That's where the admin is located. That's where that main entry that Tim was talking about is located, which is on the bottom right corner of the building. And that leads you to this large double height space to the west. So this is where we drop down and we have all of our central gathering community spaces. So the cafeteria commons, the gym, the music room, all the larger spaces are located right at the knuckle of the building where they can serve everyone equally. And then all of the orange spaces that you see are educational spaces, classrooms, the lower level on the left obviously has direct access to the, to the grade and to play. So we have special education and pre-K and kinder down there. Trying to reduce travel times between education, play and cafeteria, all of those. So it's really vital for those students to be as close as possible to those other amenities. The other five kind of blocks of orange are all equal spaces for classrooms. So grades one through five can be located in any arrangement on levels two and three. So now as we move into the renderings of the project, you'll start to notice a lot of the elements we talked about previously. The community really valued the gable form and the brick like Tim mentioned. And you're starting to see that as we look at the houses kind of march down the hill, as we talked about before. On, in this view, you're, you're standing right at the corner of Shoals Ferry and Montclair. So you're seeing the prominent main entry right off of that intersection. And just in that gray volume is the admin. So that's the first thing you interact with as you, as you get welcomed onto, onto the site. One of the, the features that we talked about previously was reinterpreting that traditional form in a modern way. So you'll see some of the asymmetries in the gables and a little bit of the more modern metal elements coming in to break up those forms and modernize the, the feel of the school a little bit. So something to note here as we're looking at these renderings is that the plantings are not a hundred percent accurate to the landscape plan. In reality, there will be significantly more trees and plant bed. We just wanted to focus a little bit on the building, on, on, on these shots. So just keep that in mind. In this view, we've walked down the hill along Shoals Ferry Road. We're now staying at the southwest corner of the site. And we're looking at a larger volume here. That's the gym and the cafeteria commons. And what, what we were able to do by locating that at the bottom of the hill is kind of reduce the scale of those inherently larger spaces. And so because they're kind of nestled into the hill, they don't feel as overbearing and they, they feel a lot smaller when you're on Shoals Ferry. To the left, you'll see the bus drop off and we're going to walk into the bus area for the next shot. We'll leave you with this one. Here, your back is to the covered play. You're looking back towards the building with the cafeteria commons as that large volume on the right side of the building and then the educational houses as we were calling them on the left. And you'll see the bus drop off, that large grass area to your left will actually be the soft surface play and that larger hardscape area between the grass and the cafeteria commons will be the hard surface play and it will also allow all of the bus access. So a nice active view to, to end the slides. I'll hand this back over to Eric here for closing. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, team. With that, in closing, I would just like to mention again, the memo that was put into record that Lena mentioned with regarding the trees adjustment along the neighboring properties. And in closing, we have read through the staff report. We agree with all of the staff's recommendations. Have no issues with any of the conditions of approval as they've been written. And I will turn it back over to the commission and open up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, first of all, great presentation. Just visually, there, there've been a couple of other school projects that we've looked at recently and this obviously tastes is subjective, so take this as it's worth, but I, I really, really dig the, the red kind of brick, almost barnhousey style. Looked the multiple buildings and stuff. That's, that was pretty cool. So, so I dig that. Just, just some understanding questions. If you could give me a picture, there was one slide that had the three floor plans placed side by side. There's the mention about special ed kindergarten, et cetera, being on the, on the first floor to try to minimize travel problems to outside and stuff. And then I saw in the photos, the exterior stairways. If you could maybe flash that slide one more time and then just talk through what the transit between the floors looks like. Either interior, exterior stairways, and then what the accessible options like elevators look like.
Absolutely. Let me bring that back up. So you're talking about the exit stairways here. These exit stairwells are just that. They're for fire exit only. They are not intended to be circulation stairs for everyday use. We have two stairs located closer to the heart of the school that can be used for more day-to-day transition. So you'll see one. Thank you, Tim. Tim circling those for us. And then we also have an elevator located right at the knuckle of the building. So right where all of that community space happens. So very centrally located.
Commissioner Ellis, you're muted.
Sorry about that. The, the emergency exit stairs, those, those kinds of things often get short shrift on design, but it, it, it looks like you guys intentionally built and designed like a, a tight, good looking set of stairs that, that blends into the school. So those aren't, those aren't otherwise compromised as, as, you know, utilitarian emergency steps, right?
They are. Go ahead, Tim.
Well, sorry, it may be pull up the plans. It's just the, 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 the ones on the ends of the, of the houses.
Yeah, yeah, outside, yeah.
Yeah, tho- those are really exit only. So these right here are exit only stairs. And so you, they, they are exterior to the building currently, but they're underneath the gable form. And so they, they look like they're a piece of it. And in case there are, is some screening such that it's not encouraged that students go in there as it would be. So I, I afraid you can't stairs. It's really just for exiting.
Okay. Yeah, you cut out a little bit, but I, I think I got your point there and that was, that was well taken. So appreciate it. And then just last question for me, just pure knowledge, just to make sure I'm reading this right. On the, there's not explicitly a cafeteria named, is that, is that commons? Is that number nine on this?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Nine is cafeteria commons. Yep.
And, and is it, is it the same for what, for what I would consider a library? Is that media center number five?
Yes, that's correct.
Cool. Perfect. All right. Thanks y'all.
Do other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Winter.
So as somebody who's got stuck behind buses for years and years and years. I'm glad that you touched on the, the nightmare that traffic in front of the So I'm curious, you put a four-way stop where you put a, put a stop light on the, on the parents parking lot, but you didn't put one on the school bus park. Which although I'm sure that mom would mom, the moms and parents are glad that they have safe intersections for them, the one that I'm most experienced with is school buses. Diving in, I shouldn't say diving, but traffic snafus occurring because of school buses. So can you maybe just help me understand why you didn't put, I know why you wouldn't put two there, but since the school buses, they're, they're every day. Clockwork and moms going in and out of the parking lot, pay or pay night. Help me understand that decision-making process. Please.
Sure.
Yeah, Garth, why don't you take this one?
Yeah. Happy to Garth Apodice with DCAST Associates Traffic Engineer and I'll add my name and address into the, into the chat. So, so regarding the, the traffic signal, there's, there's certain standards and criteria that need to be made, made part or need to be met. Part of that is the volume of vehicles. And so inherently the, with, with the activity over on the eastern or northern side of the school, that includes all the, the parent activity. That, that meets those thresholds and, and so that's, that's the reason for that. But the buses are a much lower volume. You know, we're looking at about nine buses. And with, with the higher volume of, of parents exiting the site, that's, that's the big driver for the traffic signal purpose. But there are also other safety benefits at that location, including creating a safe pedestrian crossing of Shoals Ferry Road for the students as well. And it, it ties in a nice alignment with Montclair, which then provides opportunities for the students to walk to school as well.
I, I agree that, that, that the intersection of Montclair is a good idea. I'm just saying that, and, and I understand you're, you're, you're right. You probably, I probably overlooked parents coming and picking up their children as a, as reliable in traffic issue. I just stuck behind those with like I have a three o'clock and there was but that seems to be the traffic throttling mechanism. I was just curious why you didn't traffic, didn't intersect that one, didn't prove that intersection. Some way, shape.
I, I will add that we, in addition to having the dedicated access for the buses, it, we've added a, a turn lane on Shoals Ferry that isn't there currently. So we've got half-street improvements along Shoals Ferry Road. Where right now the buses, you're correct, when they turn and left, they just have to stop and wait for, for traffic. Now we've added a, a queuing for buses to turn left into the site along Shoals Ferry Road to allow other traffic to pass while buses are waiting to turn. It just didn't meet the threshold of of quantity of trips to, to allow for a, a stoplight, but we have solved the backing up problem with the turn lane that we've added.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Winter? Nope. Okay, Commissioner Call.
You know, I was going to say that the great presentation and the design looks great. But one thing, maybe it's me and I missed it. I didn't notice anywhere where there was a bike area for students. Because fourth graders, third graders, fifth graders usually like to even bike to school. Was there a section in the presentation where it, the kids can bring their bike to school, the neighborhood kids? And park?
Yeah, this is Justin. There, we've, we've developed the bike parking and actually have spread out spaces throughout the site. Sorry, we didn't mention that. There's bike parking spaces that'll be under the front entry, covered front entry. There's bike spaces that are on the parent drop off side towards the north end of the site. There's the, yeah, Tim's probably circling all these right now. So we have the quantity required and we've also tried to decentralize that because we know that some kids are going to be coming from every which way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Chair and I completely forgot to, to re-ask the question that I asked staff earlier. About that, that access road to the, to the residences on the side and what the plan would be to maintain that road. So that I guess this is either a question to the, to the schools or the architect team, but is the assumption that the schools will continue to own and maintain that road as an access to the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the, the current plan, we are still in negotiations and with the adjacent landowners, but the plan is that we will continue to own the strip of land that will have a drive to provide access to those two residences. We'll have, we'll execute an easement with the, with the neighbors. But the property will remain in the district's ownership. They, they currently have a very small cherry stem that provides them frontage on, one of the two does, on Shoals Ferry. But the new access road will be wholly on the district's property.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, I have I think just one question. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. Are there any large retaining walls, like over four feet, besides those associated with some of the ramps on the interior of the building?
This is Justin. Over four feet? No, we've tried to keep our retaining walls actually, I think we have, they're all under thirty inches so that we don't have to worry about having to have guardrails.
Well, I commend you on that. We've had a lot of projects come in with this much grade and have not been able to achieve this. So kudos to your design team. That's very impressive. So do any other commissioners have questions? Okay. Well, with that.
It does look like Commissioner Call has a hand raised in the
I think she's left it up. She shook her head that she did not.
Sorry. Thanks.
So we can move on to the public testimony section of the agenda. We will call testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. I'm not sure that we really have that many. But we'll start with those in favor and then those opposed and then those neither in favor nor opposed. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using the breeze tan feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, in, press nine to the chair you would like to speak. Does do, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anybody wish, oh, we have a hand. Jason Rhode. You may unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, I'm one of the, the neighbors with the access road. And I was just voicing my opinion that, that we support the, the district's plan for that additional access road with access to Shoals Ferry.
Thank you. And could you give us your, I think we have your address, but could you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, my name is Jason Rhodey hyphen McGully and my address is five one four nine Southwest Shoals Ferry Road.
Perfect. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Would anybody like to speak in opposition to the application? Would anybody like to speak neither in favor nor oppose, but just have something to comment on the application? Okay, seeing none. Sorry, let me find my place on the script. Um, uh, sorry, let me find my place on the script. Um. Uh, sorry, I'm still looking for my place on the script. Um. Sorry. Now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. Excuse me. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep comments focused on the issues raised during the public testimony, and please do not provide any evidence, new evidence. Um, does the applicant wish to speak?
Chair and I, for the record, Stephen Sparks with the Beaverton School District. If we could, um, we would like to caucus briefly, um, as a team to see if there's anything we want to, um, comment on, uh, further. And I do not think we'll need more than a couple of minutes, you know, maybe five, ten minutes to, uh, return and resume the hearing.
How about eight minutes? Come back at seven thirty, seven thirty?
Perfect. See you in seven, at seven thirty.
Okay, great, thank you. So we will take a recess till seven thirty. Uh, so now it's time for the applicant rebuttal. Does the applicant wish to have any statements?
Um, our only statement is that we do not have anything to add, um, and thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Um. Any final comments from staff?
No final comments, thank you.
Um, with final comments complete, I will close the public hearing. In a standard procedure, I will randomly, randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. I will start with, uh, Commissioner Winter.
Um, well, as, as, as has been indicated several times, massive, massive project, um. You, you know, I, I didn't know that Raleigh Hills School was as old as it is, and obviously, um, probably well worn out. So, any, it's kind of hard to vote against a school district process. Well, just a school in a new school. Well, in replacing an old school, and that was harder than it should have been. So I'm in complete agreement with this.
Hey, Commissioner Call.
I'm in agreement with it.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis?
Oh, yeah, I, I think I, I shared my thoughts already, um, overall, happy with the design. Um, unique, great look, uh, and it, it, it looks like with some good compromises around, uh, uh, things like picking out the right trees and smart decisions around plantar strips and stuff, uh, that all kind of makes sense, uh, it's very sensible overall.
Right. And I agree with my fellow commissioners. So, um, how about a motion, maybe Commissioner Winter?
I move to approve ADJ twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 five, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with all of the conditions of approval and the memorandum, um, submitted today on thirteenth September.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I can second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Call. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll do a vote by roll call, starting with Commissioner Call.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. Another motion?
I move to approve CU twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one two, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with all of the accompanying conditions of approval and this memorandum submitted today.
Right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks. Um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll do another vote by roll call. Commissioner Call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. Another motion?
The next motion is I move to approve CU twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 five, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with all of the accompanying conditions of approval and the memorandum submitted today.
Right, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Ellis got to it first, or, yeah, Commissioner Ellis got to it first. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, another vote, uh, Commissioner Call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. Another one?
I move to approve DR twenty twenty-two dash zero one five five, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with all of the accompanying conditions of approval and the memorandum submitted tonight.
Great. Um, Sarah, second on the motion?
I can second it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Call. Um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, no, no, do you have a vote by roll call? Commissioner, a call?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. Another one?
Next application is I move to approve LD twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two zero, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, and the accompanying conditions of approval and the memorandum submitted today.
Right, um, a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll do a vote by roll call. Commissioner, a call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Another motion?
I move to approve LLD twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 eight, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with the accompanying approval and the memorandum submitted tonight.
A second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, um, how about we do a vote? Commissioner Call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Uh, another one?
I move to approve SDM twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, the accompanying conditions of approval and the memorandum submitted tonight.
Great, thank you. Uh, a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Commissioner Call. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll do a vote again. Commissioner Call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. We have one more motion?
One more application. I move to approve TP twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one six, based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three, with the accompanying conditions of approval and the memorandum submitted tonight.
Great, do we have a second on the motion?
I can second that too.
Thanks, Commissioner Call. Um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, and the last vote on this application, Commissioner, a call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's deci- decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal the decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. We have one other item on our agenda tonight, which are minutes.
Thank you for your efforts. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, thank you, team.
Uh, we have corrected minutes from July eighteenth, minutes from May seventeenth, and minutes from June fourteenth of this year. Then we.
I move to, I move to approve all those submitted, both, all of the submitted minutes.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll do a quick vote by roll call. Commissioner Call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So, we will adjourn at seven forty PM. Everybody have a good week.